Into order on November 8th, 2022, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we do have a little, a couple of amendments to the agenda. Under public comments, there's a bullet point for board and commission comments, and that really should have been its own number on the agenda, so we'll make that 3A. And that'll be a report and comments from John Talbot on the planning board and from Lois Kilby-Chesley from the Historic District Commission. And then, before we actually get into the agenda, I'll note that we do have public comments as number three. So if somebody has something that they want to express to the board, that's a good time to do it, although if it's about ARPA funds, we do have a separate item on the agenda, number five for that. So I would ask that you wait for number five to talk about ARPA funds, but if you've got something else you want to make public comments about, that would be number three. Okay? Any other amendments to the agenda from board members? Okay. So now we are at number three. Any public comments on something that's not related to ARPA funding ideas? Nope, okay. All right, so we'll go into 3A, Board and Commission Reports, and Planning Board Chair John Talbot, please.
George, if I could ask you to pass those around, anybody else wants a copy? If you voted today, this was the survey that was on the table, but there's extra copies if you just need some more. Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name for the record is John Talbot, 636 Stackpole Road in the beautiful town of Durham. And this is sort of a couple of things, my monthly update to you on what we've, we've done in the past month. And then, talk to you a little bit about one of the articles that we've been working on, or just a quick update on that. So the things we've worked on in the last month is Celebration Tree Farm came in and asked for a conditional use on having agribusiness, for lack of a better term, on their thing, and so that was approved by the planning board. And so they'll, they'll be doing kind of what we talked about for the educational stuff, a couple of music events, no more than two a month. Everything over by 9:00 PM, so we, we were, they were, and we were very conscious about not too much noise for the neighbors. And they were very good, good to work with, so that's approved and done. And then Deer Creek came back to us last month, which is Deer Creek is the cluster subdivision up the road on 9, with their final plan, for final plan approval. We reviewed completeness, and so the completeness review is not, do we like your plans, or are your plans, are there issues with your plans? But do you have everything you're supposed to have as your submission? And we found there were a couple of big things, that ticket items that they were missing, and so we voted incomplete. They can come, if they get it fixed between now and the, our December meeting, they'll be back. We'll review the completeness and say, hey, you're complete, hopefully, or not, and then we'll get into the substantive review. What we've done this time, and again, I commend George, the town planner, for putting all this together, as we did a peer review of their final plan submission. And that's done, it was done by Goral and Palmer, if I, I finally got it right, George. Okay, so Goral and Palmer at the cost, at the expense of the developer. And there's a fairly long list of things that they need to work on, not bad things. A couple of things like Corps of Engineer permit that they've got to get to have a stream crossing. So they need to work on that, and that was one of the things that they were incomplete on, so that's kind of where we are. And Goral Palmer did a good job, the developer engineers is working with them on those things, so I think that's a positive. And they looked at things like the connection to Route 9, is that a traffic issue? Trying to avoid what may have happened in a previous subdivision. So that's where Deer Creek is. The other topic, and so a lot of you have came to our informational meeting, this is the really bad name, but affordable housing article that, that we'd like to write for the folks in the audience who may not know. And you've all heard it multiple times, the state changed their law, or created a law that says, the short version is that on a lot, you have to allow up to three living units. So on a single-family lot, you have the house, and then you have, we have to allow as a town, two additional living units. And so right now, on a single-family lot, Durham, a lot, and if you're looking at the, the handout, this was at the town, at the voting today. Fair number of people stopped by. Most of them were, what are you, what are you doing? Explain it to me, were open-minded. Someone just said, well, hell no, we're going to vote no, and I said, you're welcome to do that. But then you see now, number option two, that's, that's the state law. So I think most people were open to doing that. Most of them actually appreciate the town giving them, giving the options. So we talked through the survey, which many of you have seen with the three options. If you all were just asking, if you have any comments, questions? If not, if there are, we'll, we'll tweak it a little bit. If not, Devin's already set it up on the computer. We're doing some test runs to make sure that the, the survey actually works, and the survey is what you see here. And we'll turn it live, we'll notify people on the Durham Blast, the news email, and people can start commenting, or start doing the survey. My gut feeling after talking to everybody is, much like the informational meeting we have, it's going to be very split between what people want to do, so. But they were good, they were good, this is what I want to do, this is why I want to do it. So then it'll really come down to the planning board picking a choice and why, and being all back to work with you on the writing of the article. And I think Jerry and George are going to talk to you about process on those kinds of things after this. But being ready for that April town meeting and getting an article out there and having public hearings and all that stuff on that, so.
So you do plan on, so in addition to the survey, there's also a plan to have, like, public hearings where people can in-person ask questions?
They've done that once, and so I don't know that we would do it again with edit, for an informational meeting. We will, we're required to have the public hearing, and so we'll.
At that point, the question's already.
The question is already written.
Right.
But it's, I told everybody today, is do the survey and contact us and say, I want to tweak it this way. I mean, one guy today had, option one is apartments, and he said, well, can you do option one with tiny houses? And so those are the kinds of discussions we can have, so.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think he's just, is, we don't need to vote or anything? It's just kind of a check-in with us, letting us know he's going to do this survey, and it's an opportunity for us if we have any, you know, comments or concerns or whatever about it, to kind of voice them before they actually release the hounds on this thing, so.
I thought there was some good, good concerns brought up during the public session we had a couple of weeks back. And having another one certainly would, would probably help, you know, if somebody else has additional questions as they read more about it.
And I'm only being, being halfway facetious, my plan is, at the town meeting, get up and introduce that. And if somebody gets up, because I didn't know anything about it, I'm going to take their name and see, one, did you vote? Or two, if you voted, you're one of the many people who walked by and looked at the ground to make sure you couldn't make eye contact. So the word is out there, I think that's what I'm saying.
Is there, is, in addition to the survey, is there just like, like some sort of information packet that kind of explains this? Or maybe, and maybe even like a frequently asked questions document, so that people can kind of go to the website and learn about it on their own?
There, right now, we're not planning to, but I think we could certainly, if we start getting feedback, we could then, I'm trying to think of a commonly asked question is, when do we have to do it? But two, can you put a, a stay, a detached, an option one, can you have a detached house? What is, if we increase the acreage, what are we thinking about? Or this is what I recommend, or whatever. So right now, we don't have that built in, but certainly, I'm trying to, George does all the work, so I turn over there to make sure George is, is in agreement. I think we could probably come up with something like that. Put it on the, on the website and say, you know, or if you have, put it on there that if you have a question, this is the email, and.
Yeah, I mean, all that helps, I just think any, anytime you have a fairly complicated issue that you got to want people to show up and vote on and decide, you know, I mean, the, the survey is great, and the, the specific time and place opportunities are great, but, you know, neither one really offers the opportunity for someone to really like research and dig in and understand, and maybe trigger follow-up questions or whatever.
Yeah.
And as you saw, what we see at town meeting, if people are confused, they vote no.
Yes, and that's our goal, is, that's what we were shooting for, is you can vote no, but you're not going to vote no because you, you weren't aware of it, I guess, is for lack of a better term. So yeah, no, George, if we can, maybe we'll figure something out there to, to do that. So that's where we are on this one. I think there's a couple more that they'll probably talk to you about Conservation District and some others that are still coming. So are there any questions?
No, I think you've got a number of the big bullets in here in sentence form, you can just bulletize, and those might just bring the, the highlights on the fore.
And we'll give them an opportu, an email, I mean, it could be my, John Talbot@Durham, whatever it may be, so.
Okay, great, thanks, John.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have Lois Kilby-Chesley from the Historic District Commission.
Good evening. So I am Lois Kilby-Chesley. I live at 31 Runaround Pond Road, which is right next to the West Durham Methodist Church. I have four things, one of them is an ARPA request. Would you like me to hold it or do it now?
Why don't you do it last amongst the four things you're going to talk about?
Okay. So the first thing that I wanted to bring up was that on November 23rd of 2021, this board voted to put together a committee to keep tabs on what was needed and what should be done to the Union Church, which is the church over on 136 at the top of the hill that used to be the Old Town Hall. And if you remember, in May, I came in and asked where the committee was in being implemented. And I was told you'd get back to me. So I'm here again, now it's been a year. And I guess I'm curious what the implementation plan is for the committee that would be overseeing the Union Church. In the meantime, of course, we know another year of deterioration. We know from talking to Calvin, I learned that the sills need to be replaced. It's pretty obvious because there's a six-inch hole, as you mentioned, last year, a year ago, it was in the newspaper, that Mr. Boya had said that there was a six-inch hole in the sill, and there is. So I would request that there be some movement in, in a relatively short time. I realized that when I sent an email to Kevin, I don't, it was probably January of last year, he said that because we were in the process of getting a new, a new town manager, that we had to push things off a little bit. In the meantime, we've done three town managers, and so it seems like it might be appropriate now to move along with that committee. We were going to put, I believe we were going to put planning board, a person from the planning board, a person from the select board, at least one person from the Historic District, and then resident. More than one, I don't know, but it was, I think it was Mr. Boya who I, I had heard was interested in being on that committee. So that's my first request. My second request was going to be the ARPA, but I'll push it off, so. The third one is, I don't know how long ago, to be honest with you, but several years ago, there was a restoration fund that was started for the buildings at that time in the town that were owned by the town, and there were at least two, because there was the West Durham Methodist Church and the Union Church. And there was a restoration fund, and, on a fairly regular yearly basis at town meeting, there was $10,000 that was put into that fund. It got up to around $65,000, $66,000 is my understanding. It's now 12, because nothing's been put into the restoration fund for a number of years. And so my request would be, and I don't, I'm unsure how to go about this, I wanted to bring it to you first, but my, my request would be, or the commission's request would be, that we consider putting $10,000 into the town budget this year to start building that restoration fund back up again. Because, as was said and quoted in the newspaper last year, when you have a building that's not heated, the deterioration becomes faster. We know that, it's damp in there, it's musty in there, and the building is starting to deteriorate. Now luckily, during this past summer, we got a new roof on it because it was leaking. It was an emergency, had to be done. They dipped into the money that was the form of restoration. To me, a roof is maintenance, but, not restoration, but that's a little bit of semantics, maybe. But, so that took out about, I think it was $18,000, that Calvin told me that the, the roof came in, about $18,000. So that came out, there've been other things that were done, Jen Litchfield did some repairs on the, on the steeple. There've been other things that have been done in them, so the money's just disappeared over the years. And it's time, in the commission's opinion, it's time to start building that money back up again. The other thing that I wanted to just update you on is the work that the Historic District Commission's been doing for the last several months. Came in in May and spoke to you and let you know then, but I know it wasn't a full committee at the, in that evening. So I just wanted to let you know what we've been doing. So we've met with George on May 12th and on October 6th. In the interim time, we worked on article, the commission worked on Article 12 and Article 5.14, which has to do with historic resources. So we worked on that over the summer because we wanted to edit it, one, so that they were aligned, but also so that the, there was a lot of clarity in the language. Because there is some terms in there and some definitions in there that, it basically is up to whoever's reading it on what that means. So what, what some of the terms mean. So we were trying to clarify, trying to make the language simpler. And we had planned on meeting with George after Labor Day and sharing with him what we'd done over the summer. And then have a report ready, that rep, that represented the commission's work, so that we could have it presented. So when we met with George on October 6th, we got the report. And in going through it between October and November's meetings, because we met again last Wednesday night, we found there's a lot of discrepancies between what we had done in our work through the summer and what the report was reporting. So we had, as I say, as I said, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and we decided at that time that trying to change any of the ordinances, now with the discrepancies, there isn't the time to do it and do a thorough job of it. Our work doesn't align with what was presented in the report. We went line by line through that report, and I have documented comments on just about every line and every topic that's in there from the commission, where the things that we did agree with, the things we didn't agree with. But what we, what we feel now is that it's best for us to continue to work on the ordinances and bring it to the town for changes in 2024, which sounds like it's so far away, but it really isn't. We would have had to have had a meeting with the property owners that would be affected because they're either buildings that are on the registry, on the National Historic Registry, or that are identified by the main Historic Preservation Commission as being eligible. There are 10 properties in the town. We would have had to have had meetings, we felt, with meetings with those property members and the abutters, because they would also be affected by any changes.
So let me start, what, now, are you looking to change the role of the Historic District Commission?
I would say expand it, yes.
Okay, and under what direction are you doing that?
Under the ability for us to submit an ordinance. George started with us and we took it from there.
Okay.
It would be to, so here's one of the disagreements. One of the disagreements that, between the report and the commission is that we would do away with the Historic District, and it would become a, an advisory commission rather than a, a commission with authority, which we have authority now to meet with people.
You have, you have recommendation authority, you don't have, you don't have yes, no, okay, not okay authority?
We have authority for the people in the district, they have to bring their plans on changes to us, and we.
They do, but you don't have approval authority or deny authority on those plans.
Would you like to tell me who does?
Ultimately, it's the code enforcement officer and the planning board. Your, the Historic District Commission is an advisory committee in the process that when something is proposed to be changed within the Historic District, then it goes before the Historic District Commission for review to see if those changes are in alignment with whatever the requirements are for Historic District Commission. And, and you present your opinion, but ultimately, it's a decision of code enforcement and the planning board on whether things are okay or not. It's not up to the Historic District Commission.
So we have a certificate that we give them with recommended changes?
Yeah, recommended, right, but it's not, it's not binding. It's not, it's still ultimately, the, the decision maker is.
And it goes to the planning board?
Well, it depends on the issue, you know, it, it depends, it's either code enforcement, and then if it's, goes beyond code enforcement, it would be planning board. I, I mean, that's, that's what it is, that's.
That's not how we've been doing it, but, okay.
Well, that might be true, but in, in reading the ordinance, I mean, that, it's, and I know George and I worked on this a year or two years ago, when we had a lot of conversations on this, and, you know, that's, that's what it is. That's what the Historic District Commission is, and I don't think there's been any, I know there's been no direction from the board to expand that or to bring more properties under the purview of the Historic District Commission. Is that what you're proposing?
That is what was proposed in the report, yes. Yes. And to do away with the Historic District Commission, and to have it become the Durham Historic Preservation Commission with oversight of the 10 properties in, in the town.
So does, yeah, well, I think there's much, I mean, that's a much bigger discussion. And this, that was, this is not the forum for that discussion.
I would like you to ask at some point the town planner what the idea was. You don't have to ask it now, but.
Right. Yeah, but the, the.
Because.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, because the commission would like to keep the district. That's one of the things we would like to do, is keep the district.
Well, my understanding is that that wasn't the view of the commission until there was a leadership change at the commission.
There was a revote.
Okay.
You can reconsider a vote, as long as someone who voted in the affirmative requests a reconsideration.
Yeah.
It can be reconsidered, and we did.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think, well, I think there's probably a workshop or something at some point in order to talk this through. Because I, I can tell you, I can, I'll always speak for myself, you know, I, I personally am not going to be supportive of anything that puts any restrictions on somebody's property that they don't welcome themselves. So if somebody owns one of those 10 properties and, you know, they're not interested in being under the historic umbrella, I certainly don't want to pass an ordinance that would force them to be there.
We, we wouldn't be able to force them to be there.
Okay, great.
Right, right.
So, yeah, so I think.
But what, excuse me, but what, the, for instance, one of the things that's in the current ordinance is that there's a 25-foot buffer between any building that's on the registry and onto the abutters property. So.
It limits what the abutter can do, right?
It limits what the abutter can do because the 25 feet, I came and spoke to both the codes officer and the planning, the town planner, and they described it as starting at the property line onto the abutters property.
Yeah.
So there's a 25-foot buffer. What I wanted was a definition of buffer. When I talked yesterday, when I came in and talked to Jerry, is it a 25-foot buffer of used vehicles? Is it a 25-foot buffer of hedges? Is it a 25-foot buffer of 14-foot rocks?
Or should there be a buffer at all, like, why should my property be impacted by the neighbors just because they're an historic property?
It's already in the ordinance.
I know, but I'm saying maybe it shouldn't be.
Maybe.
Yeah, I can't see how that could even be legal.
So, and we're, we're definitely getting into the weeds here, but I, so there's a lot here to talk through, so.
Yep.
It sounds like we're not looking at an ordinance change for '23.
Correct, we are requesting.
At this point, or at least you're not. The, George may feel otherwise, I mean, I mean, we may, there may still be something proposed to go on the warrant, I'm not sure. But in your, your opinion is that we shouldn't do something in 2023, if I heard you correctly.
Correct, that we need to slow down, that we need to reassess what was in the report. Come to.
What was the purpose of the report? What was, what was the report's purpose?
We, we thought that the report was going to put together what the commission had done, the work the commission had done. But what it did was took last spring's information, and it was put into a report. We also thought that the report was going to come to us after Labor Day, but apparently it was mailed out in August.
Who, who wrote the report?
George.
Oh, okay.
George the Burge, who's the town planner.
All right, so do you want to move on to your ARPA request?
I would love to, thank you. So, as I've already said, the Union Church is in pretty tough shape. And the commission would like the, because we, we understand now that the select board decided that nonprofits would not be eligible, only town projects would be eligible for ARPA funds. And since the Union Church is town-owned, it's quite clear that we would fall under that. So, so we would request that the Union Church get $100,000 of the ARPA funds that are available.
Where, where does $100,000 come from? What, like, where's that number from?
Hold on. Apparently, last year in November 2021, Todd had contacted some contractors at that time for estimates. And his quote was that just painting the church alone would cost upwards of $25,000. And it does need a paint job. The sill replacement, I don't have exact numbers on that, but I can tell you that I replaced, or the friends of the West Durham Methodist Church replaced one side of the church's sills. And if we have to replace any more than just one sill, it will be more than $25,000 for the sill work. It's very expensive to replace a sill like that. And the work that was done three years ago, the work that was done on the foundation where the granite was removed and cinder blocks or cement blocks were put in in place of the granite. cinder blocks or cement blocks were put in in place of the granite.
They weren't removed.
Hmm?
They weren't removed.
The granite wasn't removed?
No, no.
It's not there now?
It was gone a long time before that. No, we, we just reshored the cinder block foundation that was there. Was there before.
Okay. Well, because that's on the registry and because in talking to people about what the requirements are for the registry, including George the Burge, the, um, town planner, um, it visually has to align with what the style of the building is. And granite would be what would, be what needs to be there.
That'd be great, but-
And I believe if we look, I, at one point at least, the granite had been pushed down the hill toward the river. I'm not sure if it's still there.
Down close to the river by this point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think probably does.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I remember seeing it out there, but we weren't gonna get down there to get it. It's a long ways down.
Um, and then, of course, the recent roof repairs, I said, was eighteen thousand dollars, so, um, so the numbers add up pretty quickly when you're repairing an old building. Um, so we were asking for a hundred thousand dollars in the hopes that that would be enough to bring the Union Church back to its original glory, um.
Can I ask, for what purpose?
Well, that's a good question because Jerry and I talked about that yesterday, I, because we, he said that you had actually asked for what purpose.
Yeah.
So I don't own that building.
To your, to your point, I'll go back to, you know, one of the reasons I think that the board, like, stopped asking for contributions and, uh, to, there is, uh, it's, it's not a restoration fund, there's a fund specifically for the Union Church. It's not for, like, any building. There is a municipal capital account fund that can be used for any building, you know, fire department, public works, this building, Union Church, you know, that's, that's for like, you know, capital projects on those buildings. But as far as a specific fund, the Union Church does have a specific fund, and I think your numbers were essentially right in terms of what was there and, and what's there now, but I think one of the reasons that the board-
I'm sure they were, because Calvin gave them to them.
Yeah, right, so, the, uh, but the reason I think the board in recent years hasn't asked for more money is because I think the feeling is, you know, it, it didn't feel right to keep asking the town for money for this building that there's really not much that can be done with it, at least that we're aware of. I mean, maybe there's something we're not thinking of, but because of the, its position on the road and the lack of parking and, um, the fact that there's, you know, no heat, you know, uh, in the building or plumbing as far as I know, and, you know, that's like, why? At the end of the day, what is the town getting for spending that money on the building? And is, is taxpayer money really the appropriate vehicle for bringing that building back? Or should it be more, you know, grant-based fundraising-based? So I think that's, that's why you haven't seen questions on the warrant in recent years.
Certainly grant, grants work if someone's willing to write the grants. But it, because the building's owned by the town, the building becomes the town's responsibility for upkeep. You could leave it and in forty years, tear it down. I mean, certainly that's the legacy that has happened to lots of the buildings in town. We know that happened to the, to the school on Bowie Hill Road. It just fell into its foundation, basically. So, but when the town owns a building that is on the registry, then it becomes the town's responsibility for taking care of that building and maintaining it and renovating it and bringing it back to life. And as for what it could be used for, I would say there are innumerable things it could be used for. I would say storage is not one of them. So putting old books upstairs or whatever, they just become musty, they become moldy and then, and they become damp. But the plan for, if I can use the West Durham Methodist Church as an example, our plan is to have a small museum, to have a small lending library of antique books, and to use it for the community when, once the building is safe. So, we've already collected, seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in grants and donations. And it will take probably another seventy thousand dollars or so to bring that building back. But eventually the town will have a legacy and we'll turn it back over to the town, to the, um, Historical Society as the agreement was when they sold it to the Friends for a dollar. So we'll put it back together and then we'll give it to the Hisor- Historical Society. Because that was the agreement.
Well, Historical Society is a private organization. It wouldn't be a town building.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I thought I heard you say turn it back to the town.
No, I said turn it back to the Historical Society, um.
So I think, you know, you make a fair point about it's a town-owned building and, um, and I think the town has, you know, um, probably Todd especially has been, you know, as you mentioned, you know, we've been doing kind of the necessary fixes, like the roof and the foundation and things of that sort. And, you know, to your, your, uh, question earlier about the committee, so, yeah, it was when the, it was when, uh, we did ask the first town manager to start that committee up again. But then, we all know that whole situation blew up right before budget season. And, and I, and we did have correspondence about that, but we al- and then we also had additional correspondence where I indicated that when this town manager was, was coming on, that, um, the focus is mission-critical stuff. Uh, like, you know, understanding how the town works and, and focusing on budget and the, uh, and all of those things. And that it probably wasn't gonna be until we got past the first town meeting that he's a part of, that we were gonna be able to kind of go to the next level down of, um, you know, other nice-to-do, uh, types of projects. So, and I, and I would include the, uh, formation of the committee for the Union Church in that. But I think, I think it is important that we get that committee up and running because I think, as the, in board discussions in the past, one of the things that we would ask that committee to do would be to, um, do some work gathering input within the town on what is the town's vision for that building and what do they, what do they think it could be? And how much are they willing to invest in that? You know, like, it's, you know, who's gonna say no to, oh, wouldn't it, shouldn't we preserve this old building? Yeah, of course, yeah, we should. Okay, are you willing to spend five hundred thousand dollars to do it and then have really very limited uh, uses for that building? Well, that might change the equation somewhat in people's minds, so we need to do that work and figure out, you know, what is the vision, what will it, what will the community get behind and be willing to support? And then go in that direction. And I think the formation of the committee is gonna be critical to that. And then, depending on what happens, doing follow-up work in terms of, uh, grants and putting together some sort of a project plan for, you know, what to do, uh, with that building. There have been grandiose, sorry, and then I'll be done. There'll be one grandiose suggestion that I think I'll credit the town manager with it, that, you know, if we really wanna do something with that building and, um, have it truly be usable, it needs to be moved. It needs to be on a different piece of land and maybe in this, you know, we own all this land here, um, maybe it comes over here somewhere and it can actually be part of the town, you know, center complex, you know, I mean, those are the types of things like out-of-the-box thinking and, um, that I think that people might get behind, I don't know, but, uh, those, but those are the types of things that we would look for that committee to, um, to work on.
Who owns all the stuff in the building? Because it's more of a storage area right now.
So it was, the usage of the building was given to the Durham Historical Society. So all that stuff in there that you see on the first floor is, and is, are things that were donated by people in the town for the legacy of Durham. And if you go in there and start looking around, there's a whole lot of stuff. So, everything-
There is. We, we were just there a few weeks ago. And so I, I think my point in asking that question is, you asked, who's gonna fill out the grant applications and stuff?
Yeah.
I think, uh, you know, that, that's the place to start.
The Historical Society?
Yeah.
They're not the owners.
Well, they can still-
No, they're the tenants, though.
But they're-
They can still help.
Well, in filling out the grants that I filled out, which is probably fifteen of them in the last couple of years, they ask who owns the building, not who the tenants are of the building.
Right. So, I mean, it'd probably be a cooperative thing, I mean, I-
Well, that'd be great. I think that the Historical Society would appreciate some cooperation with, working together with, with you on it. I, I'm not speaking for the Historical Society because I'm only a member. I'm not the chair of it, but-
But my, my point would be that to get the ball rolling, because I think Kevin is right. Working Jerry and slowly and starting at this level and then working his way down is the appropriate way to do it, coming in the situation he was in. And I think getting the ball rolling in that society, starting, finding the app, finding the grants, starting the paperwork, asking for what's, information that, that's needed, is a way to get that started and a way to get in, in front of things. And so, that's, I, I would urge you as a member to, to bring that and, and start that because I think that's the way to get it started because, you know, I think we'd all like to see something happen and have that building preserved. But where does the money come from and how much is it? And, and that's the way I think it needs to start.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and my, I, I visited as well and, and my, you know, sitting there for about half an hour with the traffic going by and had the access to the building is, is completely horrendous in that location. It's great for a single-family home, that might be about it. Um, but moving the building is probably one of the better ideas into a, a piece of town-owned property. Swamp Road was one property that came up as a, as a, as a contender. Or moving it to over here, buying a piece of property at the corner. Once you come up with a plan for what you're gonna do with it, then going out and getting the money to go focus on that. Rather than just, you know, if you're gonna put all this money into it and then move it, I'm not sure that's the right, the right, um, uh, priority. Decide you wanna move it or, and put it in a spot where it's very usable, like, like the Eureka Center. That's very usable. It's got parking around it, um, and if you, you, you've gotta create parking in order to be, have it be used, access, um, to the public, um, you know, handicap access and et cetera. It needs to all be put in place, you know, and, 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 you know, I don't know about putting a septic system up on that spot. I, I, I'd be, you'd be hard-pressed to do that without filling in the whole embankment. So you'll, you're almost forced to move the building if you wanna preserve it, unless you're just gonna preserve it to look at it every time we drive by.
So if you, if the town were to move forward with that idea, I would encourage you to check the federal guidelines for buildings on the registry before you make any plans. I don't know what the, I, I'm not even gonna pretend to know that I, what the rules are around moving a building that's on the registry. I don't know. So, but I'm sure there's somebody who has that answer. Maybe the Maine Historic Preservation Commission could, but give me the-
Is there a lease with this, or is it just a?
No, it was, uh, I can't remember how many years ago. It was quite a while ago, uh, there was an actual, um, vote at town meeting. Um, it was a warrant, uh, an article on the warrant that basically, um, authorized the Historic, uh, Society to use the building. We don't, they don't pay any rent or anything like that. I don't know what they would pay for. There's no utilities in there or anything.
Well, I, I'm just thinking, I was on a, a nonprofit board where we rented it for a dollar a year in a historic building and who were given the option to, to do it and essentially step in the role of the town for grants and things like that.
Oh.
And so that would be another option if, if there's a concern about the society's ability to do that, step into the town in that role. That might be another option.
Yep, yep. But I think, like, and you kind of touched on this, I think, I think it's, I think whether Historic Society or, or what, or this committee or whoever is, they're probably gonna need to run point on actually finding grants to apply for and, and putting together a plan, um, for, for funding. Um, and then I think the town can assist with that. And if we have to be the ones to apply for the grant, then we can be the name applying for the grant. But the legwork is gonna have to come from probably Historic Society or some, or the, or a committee that's formed specifically for that purpose, so.
Yeah, I don't represent the Historical Society, so I'm not even gonna nod my head on that. I'm just gonna say it's owned by the town, so it's up to the town to decide how to handle that.
So this, I mean, this, you know, good discussion. It probably went a little bit deeper than we, um, you know, ideally probably should have had it go at, at this meeting, but, um, I think, you know, there's, yeah, obviously more, uh, to discuss and I think we will look, um, you know, as, as soon as we feel, think it's a good time, you know, pro- you know, within the next few months to get that committee, um, formed and, uh, some sort of a mission statement for them, um, and, uh, and hopefully we can get it, get it going.
So just to clarify, I did not realize that the committee was not going to be available until after the town meeting. I had, I didn't get that piece, so, um, the fact that yesterday I brought it up in our conversation, I apologize if I put more on your plate than-
No, th- that's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm learning a lot too as I, every day I learn something, something new.
Me too, and I'm not even in this office every day.
That's okay. We, well, you know, you can pile it on the plate and, and some of it's gonna fall off, but, um, I mean, if we wanna get the committee going, I mean, we, we can do that. It, but as the chairman has said, you know, going into budget season, being new, I have a, I have a pretty full plate trying to figure out how, how the town does its finances, so. Uh, but I'm more than willing to help. And, and as far as grants, I'm here to help with that as well. I mean, I'm trying to get together, put together an efficiency main grant too. But that stuff takes time, so any, any help from residents or organizations is only beneficial and will get done quicker.
And, and looking at the state Historic Preservation Commission regulations, they allow movement of that building. There are, it, it's, it's clear in here. You can move it if you've got a plan. So that's not off the table at all.
Buildings can move all the time.
What's that?
Buildings like that can move all the time.
Yeah, they move all the time to preserve them, just for the purpose. Yeah, so it, it's all in here and-
Yeah.
It would be good to have a plan.
It, and, and it would because you'll get much better buy-in from anyone you're trying to get money from when you have a plan and plan first.
It would preserve it and get it used, which is what everybody wants for their money these days, right? It's, we wanna use it.
Yeah.
It'd be a nice addition.
Well, it was the town hall.
Sure served itself well for the, you know,
Yep.
For its time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Well, we'll segue into number four, draft ordinance amendment articles with the town planner.
On, on number three, a public comment. I didn't have the agenda, um, and I was looking over the gentleman's shoulder for open comment, for public comments. I didn't get a chance to speak. I-
Are you speaking about something other than ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, mind George?
My apologies, I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead, come on up, Chad.
Um, Chad Burke, uh, ten forty-three Pinker Brook Road. She's got a question in regards, I didn't see it on the agenda, but for BYOB permit for the AMVETS. I dropped it off last week. I didn't see the, um, on the agenda for this week.
So at our, at our last meeting, we basically authorized the town manager to take care of BYOB permits going forward, and they don't need to be on the agenda.
Fantastic, okay. So I dropped it off Tuesday. I'm not, you've seen it already?
Yeah, you're, you're gonna be all set. I just gotta have the chief and codes put an eyeball on it.
Okay, fantastic.
Thought we could streamline that process a bit.
That's great, yeah, I know that, that was an option, either the select board or the town manager, and historically we didn't have a town manager.
Right, so we, we voted at our last meeting to let him do it and he's gotta, he's gotta check some boxes with uh, fire chief and public works and codes and all that, but for, for you guys, it's pretty much-
Well, in this case, the, the event is Friday night, so kind of wanna streamline this a bit more, yeah.
So you'll be all set. So come in tomorrow and you'll have your-
Are you gonna be in tomorrow?
Yes.
Fantastic, all right. Paul, guys, taking more of your time, man.
Plut in front.
Guys, thank you so much.
Hi, George.
Hello.
What's new?
Do you want me to dive right in?
Yeah.
Might as well. Jerry had suggested that I come tonight just to kind of give you an update. About, just about a year ago at this time, I was doing the same thing and talking to you about amendments to the land use ordinance and, uh, I think one of the very positive things at the difference from this year is that, as you can see, the committees are engaged. And it's great that they're having communication with the select board, because last year that wasn't happening.
Right.
And I think that was part of the problem going into the town meeting, so I'm encouraged that there is good communication. Hard communication, but good communication. So I know- Hard communication, but good communication, so I know that's, that's the key to making all of this work, so. Just a quick recap, how we got here, it was twenty eighteen, the town adopted a new comprehensive plan that kinda reshifted focus from the state idea of having growth in rural areas and doing all kinds of stuff that the town just didn't have the capability. So, that actually went to town meeting and was passed unanimously, which is just amazing and, and incredible. And that set the direction, keep the whole town rural, uh, get into compliance with, uh, all of the state regulations on, uh, development, and, uh, basically improve the system to effectively manage the growth that's happening in town and development. Within a framework of keeping the basic character of the town and working within the limitations of the town, so that's what we've been doing for the last, uh, four years. And, uh, the first thing we did was to just overhaul the land use ordinance, which was unusable, was unreadable. It was just impossible to, to do the regulation, so we, we overhauled it, we fixed a couple of the key pieces for the planning board to have effective tools to review development proposals, which is working now. The last year, I've been, or almost a year, been working with them to develop the systems to, to handle very complicated development proposals effectively and efficiently, so I think we're making a lot of progress on that front as well. So, what I've also been tracking is to try to address some of the broken parts of the land use policy program of the town. And the three particular ones that, uh, I've been working on, uh, one of which has been kind of, uh, circum, uh, imposed by the state new, state's new law on affordable housing. Uh, that has just kinda jumped onto the scene and we, it, we have to deal with it. But one of the recommendations of the new comprehensive plan is to look at that issue. When you get rid of the growth area, in terms of providing housing opportunities within the community, it said, you used to allow multifamily in that area, three and four unit, uh, and you couldn't do it, because you didn't have the density and you didn't have the infrastructure. But there, there is a place in a community like this, and so the comprehensive plan talks about, very much in line with what the state has imposed on the town. And there are some things you can do to make it work, uh, better for the town, rather than just accepting the state mandate. So, that's one of the things I've been looking at with the planning board. We went through the town meeting process for fixing the compri, the, uh, Resource Protection District, which is based on great part, some really bad data from outdated sources. And, uh, as you know, went to town meeting last year, and it was a, there was a really, uh, I, in my, my observation, a disagreement on the procedure that was being used, as opposed to the substance. And so, I've been working with the Conservation Commission, uh, met with them just a couple of weeks ago, to try to keep that policy process, so that when we get to town meeting, we at least have clarity of what the issue is. And not all of these confusing questions of process and notifications and all of those things, and, and to have an effective public, uh, participation process. So, we sent out letters last year, we were prepared, updated list, because the phase two is now being looked at simultaneously. Um, the Conservation Commission is, is scheduled a public informational meeting, and we're hoping to send out the postcards to all of the affected properties to let them know that this is gonna be going on, so that's the second track. Uh, and then the third is I have been working with the Historic District Commission, and just for the record, Candy, I saw you here, she asked me to help in terms of the Historic District issue, I didn't inject myself. Uh, and she really looked at the comprehensive plan, uh, recommendations, and just some of the confusion tonight about, what does the Historic Commission approve, what does the planning board approve, what does the code officer? There's all these overlapping jurisdictions, and it's not clear who is responsible. And there's been con, uh, conflict between planning board, code officer, and commission because of this, it's, it's really not a very clear, uh, system, and the regulations are even more unclear. So, what I've been trying to do is, is help the, the town, the Historic District Commission, just wade through all of that stuff, and come up with hopefully a, a more effective way of doing it. So, I did work with the commission over, uh, almost a year, and came back to last spring and came in with some recommendations, which they, uh, reviewed, discussed, debated, and then voted on it. And so, I told them at that time that I was gonna prepare a report for them and present it after Labor Day. Meanwhile, they had a change of leadership, through the summer, they, they decided that that was not necessarily the, the best direction to go. And so, they did a lot of work, had a lot of meetings, and I met with them, um, just a month ago, and, and basically, they presented to me what they had done. I presented to them their report, and it was clear that we weren't on the same page in terms of the direction. So, I agree with Lois that, um, it would be really, really helpful to, to get together, uh, and one of the things that Jerry and I have discussed is this concept of an ordinance committee, and I've kinda shared that idea with him. He might've shared some of the concept with you to basically, um, at this time of year, uh, get, do, do what we're doing, getting agreement on what these questions are gonna be that are gonna be presented. And so, that all the committees are on the same page on the policy direction. Now, goes up to the vote, it could come out differently, but at least we don't go in with everybody talking in opposite directions. And then after town meeting, have the committee, which would consist of the chairs of each of the groups that are affected and administer. So, the planning board, the Board of Appeals, the, uh, Historic District Commission, the Conservation Commission, any, any group that has, you know, has to carry out the ordinances, whatever the areas are.
Is that where the members of the committee come from? Is, is it one?
Well, my thought, my, my, the simplest concept that I could think of, 'cause you don't wanna create a whole nother committee process.
Right, we can't get people for the committee to be happy.
Yeah, yeah, but you have, you have dedicated volunteers for each of these groups, have their leadership come, meet right after town meeting. Say, okay, look, here's what happened, if, like, for instance, the failed initiatives last time. Okay, what are the priorities for moving forward? And then kinda discuss the priorities, and then sta, delegate, you know, okay, like, the planning board has, has asked the Conservation Commission to take on the resource protection, the planning board is focusing on affordable housing, and so they've kind of assigned the responsibility to prepare something for the next town meeting, and then right after Labor Day, come back together, report to the select board, see where these different parts are, and then basically say, okay, this is what should be put on the town meeting ballot. So, twice a year, have the leadership of each of the committees come together just after town meeting, and then in the fall, to prepare for the next town meeting.
That's the ordinance committee, it's not.
This would be the ordinance committee.
Okay, all right, so it's not like, hey, who wants to be on the ordinance committee?
No.
Okay, all right, okay, now I have a, I have a better understanding of that.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that would help, because all the groups would, would really, and discuss what's important and what the priorities are. So, that was an idea.
Be comparable, almost like to, it's almost like a department head meeting, you know, like, something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea, but, okay.
Yeah, so at this point, what it's looking at, you know, the affordable housing, I think, is definitely gonna be on, 'cause the town has until next July, uh, and if you don't do something, the, the state automatically imposes their, their new zoning on you for the multi, multifamily. I, I'm confident the Conservation Commission is gonna be prepared to go and present to the planning board a proposal for moving forward with phase one and phase two. They are still struggling with the idea of having two separate questions. They're still struggling with that idea, at least the last meeting that I was with them. So, uh, one of the thoughts that I just wanted to present to you is that, you know, this is a, this is not the issue you wanna have debated at the town meeting. Once, one question or two, and there's good reasons for doing it the way it's proposed. I offered those pros and cons to you just about a year ago, um, and I still think that having it as two separate questions is, is, uh, appropriate. Uh, but I can understand, there are concerns that if you only do that, and then you lose resource protection for some areas, you won't, you'll, you won't get it for the others.
But if that's the way the town votes, that's the way the town votes.
Yes, I understand. So, one of the questions that I discussed with them at that last meeting is that, um, rather than have a debate about that issue, one of the things we could do, like we're doing with the survey on the affordable housing, is just put that as a survey question. Is that a concern for you? And if the survey results indicate overwhelmingly it's not an issue, then.
Put what out in the survey, whether it should be one question or two?
The question of should these be voted on separately or as one item?
Well, that's, that strikes me as really getting into the weeds of sausage-making and the process to, it, it feels like too finite of a question to survey and, and, in my opinion.
Yeah, just if you presented it in pretty much the same way we're presenting three options for affordable housing, either being less restrictive, being more restrictive, or being neutral. You could have the issue of, do you think that it's unfair to landowners to have this as a combined issue? And then, do you think that you're concerned, are you concerned that if it's two issues, that's gonna result in less land being protected? Those seems to me to be the two countering arguments and viewpoints, and just giving people an opportunity to weigh in on that in a survey, hopefully, I think, could just say, we don't need to discuss that at a town meeting.
Well, it wouldn't be a discussion at town meeting. Because, I mean, somebody could bring it up and say, they could express their displeasure that it's, for the sake of argument, that it's two questions, but ultimately, they'd be voting on the questions, not whether it should be one or two.
Which is what we thought was gonna happen last time.
Well, but last time, the difference was, we didn't even put, we didn't put both questions on last time, there was only one question on there.
And can't they, I, I mean, I agree that that's an issue that the commission should be doing and not taking input on. But if they're so concerned about that, can't they phrase the questions in a way that they both have to pass or neither passes? If that's, if that's their concern, which I tend to agree, let the voters decide and however the dice fall, they fall. But if that's their concern, you, there's a way to phrase it that way.
Yeah, my concern is, I think, and this was the problem I had with essentially turning this over to the Conservation Commission, because they come at it from a very particular point of view. And so, the, the concern, and it's largely a Conservation Commission concern, is that people will vote to take stuff out of resource protection, but they won't vote to put stuff in. And the, where we were last year, so for you two guys who weren't on the board at that time, was that, um, we felt very strongly that it was not right to essentially hold some property owners hostage for having, getting their properties that is mislabeled, misshown on the map as resource protection when it shouldn't be, and have a condition of having that fixed be that this other land goes into resource protection. I mean, that to me is a very, um, I, I, is an unethical approach, and I will, I don't care what a survey says, there is no way I'm supporting that. And I'm, I'm just one guy, and, yeah, so.
Well, I, I'm not gonna take a position one way or the other in that regard, but I think if that's a concern, they have to make the decision. I don't think it should be going out to other people.
Well, and often it's.
And, and, and since it was delegated to them, it should be made.
Well, was it delegated to them, it's, they don't have a decision to make, right? They're not a decision-making body, they, they, they're not even a quasi-judicial body. You know, this is, this is on the, um, on the outskirts of, to put it politely, of their mission. And so, ultimately, it's this board that has to determine or approve the wording, uh, of the questions that go on the, the warrant. It's not, it's not the Conservation Commission.
But they're making recommendations to this board, right?
Uh, ye, yes. Well, I don't know if they're making it directly or if they're.
No.
The agent of the planning board and.
They, they, and again, in fairness to the Conservation Commission, they accepted this delegation from the planning board.
Right.
The planning board asked them to take this on, because they didn't have the time to focus on all these issues, and, and they agreed to take it on. 'Cause it is, they recognize it's their area of expertise, and, uh, so therefore, they have, they have looked at going forward with the process. I just wanted to say, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, they're still struggling with that question. They're not saying, don't do it, they're just saying they're at that rate.
Right, but the core of why they're struggling is because they're af, they're concerned that the town won't vote to add property to resource protection, and they want that linked to taking other people's property out of resource protection. And again, that's just, that's just not right. It's just not fair to the people that, whose property is, you know, mislabeled on the map as being resource protection, and they, they have restrictions on them that shouldn't be there, to say that we're not going to lift those restrictions and fix that error, and it is an error. That we're not gonna fix that unless voters agree to put this other property that meets certain criteria for going in to resource protection. It's two completely separate questions.
Okay, anyway, I just wanted to give you the update, that's where we are with that question. Um, I have drafted the map amendments for both phases, uh, the language is all ready to go. I've got the three alternatives for the affordable housing, which we're still working on progress, so, uh, and although the Historic District Commission has indicated their desire to hold off, which is fine, I've done most of the research on that front as well. So, in all three topics, I've done the research, uh, two of the three, I've prepared amendments that I think will be ready to go, and those are probably, we talked about other, other issues like roads.
Uh, that was my question, I thought, was there gonna be something with roads?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so where we came out on the roads was that, you know, we had talked about going a proposal, and John will tell you, he got feedback at the, at the, uh, election today about the cost of building a road to his, to a backlot, hundred thousand dollars. People were saying, this is, this is unsustainable. So, uh, we had talked about changing that, just taking that back, not getting into, you know, do gravel roads need to be paved or not paved? That was the other sticking point, uh, so where we've come out, and I've talked to the, the staff, town manager and the other staff, is that just simply, uh, and they had talked about going forward with a proposal to create, to do sixteen-foot driveways for a backlot, for a single home. But then the state law comes in and says, you're gonna allow at least, you know, two units, uh, or more. So, that kinda threw that wrench in, that works. So, where we came out from a staff standpoint is to stay, is to say, look, let's just simplify and clarify what you have to do to get a private road outside of a subdivision approved. Right now, code officer is involved, uh, road commissioner is involved, and it also requires an approval by the planning board. Three different agencies have to get together to approve a simple, uh, common driveway. So, do that, so, uh, simplify, clarify, and reduce the bureaucracy is probably what we're gonna do. And include that clarification, which was the other issue, that you cannot get a, a road accepted in town, except at town meeting.
That was the big, that was one of the big ones that they got hung up on, was.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's where we are, and I'm, I'm moving forward on all three fronts, working with these groups, and I think we can hopefully, uh, continue to make good progress.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Anybody have a, I mean, I know I had a very strong opinion about the questions on the Conservation Commission. Anybody else have comments or a contrary opinion to that, that they wanna, that they wanna offer?
I would, I would agree it should be two questions.
I agree.
I'm even okay, we can ask, we, you know, we can ask the, uh, do you wanna put stuff in question first, if they want, that's fine. We can ask that one first, um, on the, you know, it's from when we order the questions.
You'll put it in order.
On the, uh, on the warrant, you know?
I just, I, where I struggle is if, if someone's property is misidentifying and not, and is in an area that's not resource protection, why isn't it immediately removed? I mean, why do we have to have a bartering system?
That, that's.
A bartering system to get somebody's property m, mis, that's mislabeled.
That's a good question, if it's truly mislabeled, why, why can't the, why can't that just be fixed? 'Cause my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, because we've already had at least one challenge that went to the Board of Appeals that, and they won, because, you know, just because the map was wrong, you know, but under the actual criteria, they weren't in resource protection, so they won. I don't know if that's happened more than once, but.
Yes, it is.
But if we don't, i- it just seems like without fixing that map, that's just, it's just gonna happen over and over, they're always gonna win, you know, and.
Actually, the last one that went did not get their, uh, did not get the amendment, and the reason that they didn't is the Board of Appeals said they'd questioned whether they had the authority to change the zoning map. And the fact that the, uh, vote at last town meeting did not change it, and it was coming up again, they didn't wanna supersede the legislative process. That was the statement, so.
Yeah, so.
They agreed the, and, and here's another angle on this, is that some of these areas are mislabeled, but that doesn't mean that there's no natural resource basis for having it in some level of protection. So, for example.
That's a subjective question, right? Because it depends on how many factors or what criteria you wanna use, that's, see, that's where I, they need to be separate questions, because.
Right.
Here you, the, the property that's coming out, it's a black and white, does not meet. Here you, the, the property that's coming out, it's a black and white, does not meet the, uh, conditions. The, what do we wanna put in, that is a much more subjective question, because it, you, the, beyond the shoreline zoning, it, which is like the minimum, you, there are, it depends on how many additional criteria the town wants to apply to that, so it's a more subjective question.
And there are other mechanisms for protection.
Right.
There are clustered subdivision requirements, where you have to set aside certain parts as open space. There's land acquisition programs. There's voluntary donations. So, resource protection is like the most severe restrictive that you can use.
Yeah.
And you don't have to use that, and you use it for the most important resources.
Yeah.
So, that, that is part of the other, it's not just like there's no basis whatsoever for putting in a resource protection.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you, George. Really good, really good work. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's all hard, but it's all reward.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so now we are at number five. This is, um, if anybody has, um, public input regarding the use of ARPA funds, if you're here to speak to that, then have a seat and state your name and address and your idea or your thoughts.
Alan Purington, Day Road. Originally was going to talk about the Union Church, but I think there's been enough discussion about that and not a plan out there to, uh, come to any real conclusion. Uh, the other item I wanna talk about is the Eureka Center. And a lot of discussion certainly that has happened here at select board meetings has been the need for additional office space and meeting space. And I believe that with the Eureka Center right now, there is an issue with, uh, the underpinning or some of the lolly columns that may not be supporting the floor that need to be addressed. And I think that would be a great place to be utilizing those funds. And if we are going to turn that actually into a meeting room, I would certainly suggest that, that parking area be paved. Uh, then it would stop people from, uh, using the gravel as for bullets against the building, which we had in the past. So, and also, I don't know whether the restroom there is ADA approved or not. That's something else that would have to be addressed if we're going to be, make that a meeting room.
Right.
I'm pretty sure one is.
Yeah.
But I'm not positive.
But it's a good point. We need to confirm, yeah.
And, you know, and lumping that in together, if that does come to fruition, we would actually be taking this room here and hopefully making it into possibly two office spaces so we can alleviate the crowding in the other, got three people in a what, eight by ten?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. So, that, that's one, you know, and I look at these ARPA funds and I certainly would not be recommending utilizing them for something that doesn't exist. We have so many things in this town that exist now that can utilize the funds and not impact the actual annual taxes to the townspeople.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No? Okay, um, move on then to CIP requests and five-year plan discussion. Take it away, Jerry.
Okay.
So just for the board, basically, what we're doing here is kind of a, um, we wanna look through this stuff and for basically anything we might wanna call out or, um, address or clarify before all this stuff gets handed off to the CIP committee for the more detailed work, so.
Could you, how do you, how do you wanna start? Do you want me to start with the town office stuff or?
Well, um, so basically, I think when we met, uh, last time, we, um, so I think we've gone through all the individual requests.
Okay.
I noticed, um, the chief amended the total on his to the one, to the one twenty-five, um, for the, the cost of refurbishment. Well, they, actually, you and I, we did talk about, um, the, on that one, and maybe, I don't know if you already talked to the chief about this, but the, um, chief, the, the quint refurb for a hundred and twenty-five, that's, that's on your schedule to be done in twenty twenty-four, right? I, I think that's what I saw.
No, that, that was a self-imposed timeframe.
So are you looking to do that work in twenty-three?
In twenty-three, yes.
Okay, okay.
For, for a quint, also known as the ladder, that's a standard in the industry. Not written in NFPA code or standard, but the industry across America is thirty-year lifespan. So I'd like it budgeted for, again, and then out to bid and then fixed for that thirty-year, which should prolong it seven to ten more years. It's funny you bring that up, thank you. I just had the, the quint certified. So all our ladders, all our portable ladders, there's fourteen of those, and the quint itself, private company comes in under nine hundred dollars and certifies the hydraulics, the ladder, all of it.
Yeah.
And they were impressed, uh, uh, really, third-party independent, and I'll get the report to you, uh, of the condition of that truck.
Hmm, okay. So just, if you're looking through your packet on the, the fire department's schedule, it's, it's this one, looks like a little spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So there's two things on there, so it sounds like it should be, the fiscal year for the refurb quint truck twenty-four should be twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-four, if, if I'm hearing the chief right. And it's not a million dollars, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We'd wanna make sure we make those changes before it goes to the CIP committee. Is that, and Jerry and I talked about this, the, the, um, it says new cost on that column, you know, because quite honestly, chief, before you were here, um, the concept of a refurb wasn't even on the radar. Nobody had even brought that up as a possibility, so it was always new, 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 new. And, um, so I think that's, I think we're changing that column to just estimated cost. And you said it was one twenty-five, right? Is that?
One twenty-five to, to rehab that truck.
Yeah.
The way the committee has, has.
Yep, okay, thought, right. Right, we just wanna make sure we're.
Sure.
Cleaner, clearing that up before it goes to the CIP.
I did put in there, I, I think concurrent terminology, to replace that truck with anything new is a million to start.
Yeah.
Just so the public knows, that's not pie in the sky. That's legitimate two-year build now, and, and a million just to start.
I know, I get it, yeah. Okay. With the ladder, right?
Doesn't mean it's worth it.
I mean, you get the lot, but I'm just saying, I mean, comparatively, it's eighty grand for a pickup truck these days.
So I think, you know, Jerry did a good job. He put together the, with the department heads, put together the schedules that we had asked for at our last meeting and, and, um, and the requests and, um, and the, the paving plan, and our purpose is not to go through these in detail tonight, but it's just more of a, you know, hopefully everybody got a chance to look at it and see if they had any questions before tonight. And, um, I get, we, I would look for, uh, either bring up an issue or a question, or we say, yep, this is good to go to the CIP, uh, committee.
So what they actually requesting, capital project requests right here.
Yeah, yeah, so this, so then, um, and were we gonna take, actually, uh, were we gonna take the codes office one out of here?
Take that out. He's, he got his proposal to me yesterday at three thirty, so I didn't include it.
That was the one we talked about. We were just gonna do that. We're just gonna fund that one. Yeah, so to follow up on that, uh, he doesn't quite have, well, he has it already now. Wasn't ready just for this meeting, but one of the other, so we wanted him to kinda bring us the specifics, like which scanner, how much, yada, yada, yada.
Right.
And then the other thing we needed to check was just to confirm that there was actually money in the municipal capital account, um, which we have. It's like ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So on your sheet here, the bold up at the top on your capital request, those, the reserve balance, that's, that's what, that's what we have.
So.
Public Works looks shy right now, but I already took the truck that's coming out.
Yes. 'Cause that was a twenty-two, uh, expense, or a twenty-one expense, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's, the money's gone, or allocated, I should say.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Blend together.
So any, uh, and this is not our last look at this, so now the next step is, this packet essentially goes to the CIP committee. A lot of this, like the schedules and everything, it's just, it's kinda context for them. Um, and then they will review these individual requests and prioritize them. And, uh, then they'll come back to us and we'll, we'll determine basically as a board, okay, well, how far down the list can we go? And, um, and then, and then we would also have a conversation of, how do we wanna fund it? Like, do we wanna use, like, where appropriate, do we wanna use ARPA funds, or do we wanna raise taxes, or, or whatever? So, that, that will come later, after they come back to us with their prioritization.
The, the red in here, Jerry, is the new items, or?
The red in this big sheet right here?
Big sheet, yeah, which the.
The red of the, is what it, is the cost of, of the, it's an expenditure, it's what it would cost to, to do the mine item.
Okay.
So the stream costing is, you know, it's a hundred and fifty, but Calvin's got another hundred and fifty coming in to grant, correct?
We hope.
We hope. So these are just the expenditures that there, these red numbers should match what you see on your sheet.
Okay.
On your project sheet.
All right.
Now, two, there's a cou- there's a couple that are missing that chief's working on, which is the, uh, generators that quit, that didn't work.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we're still getting in, but.
Oh, we're gonna get another request on that?
Uh, yeah, it was still, because of the storm that we had recently and finding out that they weren't working properly and that their role, we're working on getting.
Okay.
Getting prices for, for that.
Jerry, and then were you, chief, were, were you going to submit, uh, remember, um, just a request for just a contribution to your capital reserves? 'Cause you don't have that in here right now.
Well, I, not, not for twenty-three, he doesn't.
Okay, that, well, that's what I'm asking, so you don't, okay.
I, I believe on that, working with the town manager, maybe Ruth and other people have identified, um, sort of what's there, what, what the capital maybe reserve is.
Yeah.
Fire department, and, and we were fine.
Okay, all right, good. I just wanna make sure.
No, I, I appreciate the opportunity, but, um.
I had, I had, I had just a question regards, in terms of the, I think it might just be a misprint, just for clarification, on the, um, replenishment for the reserve for the, uh, public works. They have estimated cost of two hundred. Request is for a hundred. Is that just a, which one is it? Is it?
Oh, okay. That first request?
On this one, yeah.
Yeah, so when we started, it was hundred, then Jerry and I got going over the actual, what the actual balances were gonna be.
We were gonna be in the red, so I updated.
I guess I forgot.
So is it two hundred thousand?
You're gonna ask for two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I think that's brave.
It is.
Brave move.
Keeping in mind that we cannot use ARPA funds for reserves.
Yeah, you might get nothing.
To keep us in the black.
So, well, so is that two sixty-five after the addition of the two hundred, or is it, do you have two sixty-five now? 'Cause the way I read this, you have two sixty-five and asking for another two hundred.
No, we have sixty-five after we pay for that truck that's coming.
Okay.
We got sixty-five up top. We replenished two hundred, now we're at two sixty-five. We spend one fifty, we're at one fifteen. We spend one oh five, we're at ten. That's how we read across that.
Okay, so, so in twenty-three, we're looking to buy a dump truck for a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah.
That is, and we have a request here for that?
Yes.
And we're looking to buy, and the stream crossing.
You have a request for that.
We have a request for that.
Yeah.
So those are separate things. Those don't require anything from that two hundred thousand reserves to fund, 'cause those will be, um, well, those will be questions.
On the ballot.
On the ballot. So it doesn't make any sense to have a vote to tax people two hundred thousand dollars to deposit into capital reserves and then vote again on the same warrant to then buy a truck or, and then buy a, um, uh, do the stream crossing. Because, this, because then, then you're just, um, it, it's muddying the water. So re- really what there should be here is if, if, if the thing is, we need the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to fund the, the dump truck and the stream crossing, then, then those are the two questions. You know, it's like, the, any reserve request would be, what do we want to put in the account beyond that two hundred and fifty-five? So, there'll be, because, because in this case, we're gonna have to tax people for the capital reserves.
Right.
Right? And so, then it doesn't make sense to say, we're gonna tax you for the capital reserves and put it in the bank, and then we're going to ask you to approve a truck and we're gonna take the money out of capital reserves that we just taxed you for to pay for it. 'Cause that, that's what I'm seeing here, right?
I think a hundred and five of the truck was, were you looking for ARPA funds on that? Or, or a possibility of, so really, you're looking to raise, you're looking to ra- if you're not, you're looking to raise four hundred and plus thousand dollars.
So are you asking for the ARPA first?
And we can't use ARPA for the stream crossing, 'cause you can't use it against other grants.
But you could for the truck, and that was my original interpretation, 'cause if not, you're asking, you're, you're asking for, you know, three Christmases, no, not one Christmas.
Well, right, so, keep in mind, the first time, I was trying to keep you in the black. We, Calvin and I were, it's because I had you in the red in the beginning and then.
Yeah, but it's only if that, yeah, but it's only in the red if all, if you, if the assumption is that that everything's being paid for out of reserves. And what I'm saying is, if there's, if there's, if the money's not already in reserve, then, then you don't have it to pay for the truck. And it, it, it's, and then choose, to vote to put it into reserves and then take it out of the reserves immediately, like before it even gets cold, you know, uh, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's.
It's like a cart.
So, so what you say, you just rather have them ask for the hundred and fifty and a hundred and five?
Separate questions.
Separate questions.
Well, those are gonna, those would have to be separate questions anyway, right? So, so I think the, the stream crossing grant, um, I think you're looking at raising that. So that's gonna be a, 'cause we can't use, um, ARPA for that. And then I think on the dump truck, you're also looking at raising that, because you don't have a hundred and five thousand dollars in, um, reserves to cover it. And then what I would do is say, okay, you've got sixty-five thousand, what am I gonna ask for?
On twenty.
In, in twenty-three to build on that.
Yeah.
And like, so that might be fifty or a hundred thousand to get that balance up to, you know, a hundred and sixty-five or one, a hundred and fifteen. You know what I mean?
I do. It's kinda how we had it the first time.
Yeah, I think, I think the way you did this, and I get where you're coming from, is that you, you were kind of assuming that all these expenditures always come out of reserves.
Right.
'Cause then, then you don't wanna be looking for another.
They might in a future, you're never, I shouldn't say never, you never say never, but, um, it's, you're not going to, the idea wouldn't be to put money into reserves and then spend it the same year you put it in.
'Cause you're putting it in reserve.
You're taxing people to do that, so just tax people for what you're gonna spend it on.
Yeah.
And then.
That's the way, that's the way we had it.
'Cause then the following year.
No, no, just.
Like down the road, like presumably, there might be a balance of reserves in, um, uh, you know, of two, three hundred thousand dollars or whatever, like it's been in the past, where we've just, we've put a question of, we wanna get a dump truck, a plow truck, and we've got money in reserves, we're gonna fund it out of reserves.
And then we're gonna raise the rest, right?
Yeah, if there's a balance, yeah, raise the rest.
So we had it kinda right the first time.
But what I wanted to ask you about though, is based on our conversation the other day, is we started talking about, you know, when it comes to the trucks and stuff, that maybe we should be talking about leasing.
Right.
Not, um, and maybe twenty-three's not the year to, to do that, maybe it's too.
Right.
But, you know, um, 'cause that was.
That would help cash flow.
And, yeah.
With us, because it gets.
You wouldn't be putting, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out. You wouldn't be putting, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out in one shot.
Right, and you, 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 you'd lease it over five years, if it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, it's fifty thousand a year. Coming right out of your expense budget, cause you leased it.
Right.
Paid off in five years, and you can pay it early, if we, you know, if we could.
There are scenarios that come back and look bad the other way, and you have more.
Yeah, we need to look into it, I, I'm not, I'm not saying we should.
But we, but because of the way Durham is in a calendar year. We run into problems at, in June, where we're, we're borrowing money with interest to get through our expenses with a tan, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get it.
You know, so.
Leasing guys, so don't.
Yeah, so, leasing can help with that cash flow to help us maybe get out of that situation.
Right.
And we, we should have that.
But it's something we should look at probably for twenty-four, not for twenty-three, it's kinda late at this point.
I can, you know, what I'll do is I'll bring in a person that is really familiar with it, the guy at the bank, and he can explain it all to us really well.
More of a lease to own is what you're talking about.
So, I.
Right, lease to own, exactly.
I think the, I think kinda the way these proposals are now, where you have, you have one in here for the stream crossing, you have one in here for, for your truck. And then you have a separate one for a hundred thousand dollars to put into reserve, I, I think that's probably fine, you know? But not the two hundred thousand for reserves.
Yeah, it was, it was that way at first, but then we were like in the red, and. We were like, do we really wanna show that we're in the red, so we flipped it on its head.
Well, in the red, the red might simply indicate that we don't have reserves to cover this, so this is gonna have to be taxed.
I, I, I'm, I'm getting it more.
Big Santa Claus list. The only other question I had, Calvin, I, I, all this was pretty well done, this was the only question that I, I really had, and. The last one I had outside of the two hundred thousand would be, excuse me, I apologize, um, in regards to the stream crossing. Cause I know where it gets a little foggy for me on this sheet versus that, is we had monies that we allocated for the steam crossing. Wh- where is that on this spreadsheet?
That went away, right, Calvin, you don't know who.
I don't know where that money is, it's in our general account.
Yeah, it's, it, that one-on-one that they approved.
Correct, so that money was already raised, so, I know we can't, and I'll defer to you on this, Kevin, that's where my question lies is. Is that money in Calvin's capital reserve, or is that earmarked for just general capital reserve somewhere?
That was an article, so.
It was an article, so that's why I would assume it would be in capital works.
Right, so that's in the general fund with everything else.
Well, it's in the general, it's in the general fund in terms of the bank account, but isn't it, wasn't it? It was a.
Yeah, it's in a spreadsheet somewhere being.
But, what I'm getting at is voted on to spend it on X, it wasn't voted on to put into a capital fund to someday spend on X on a crossing or a streaming. So, that's where that form and that particular request gets a little.
Yeah, that should be in the, I would think that should be.
Easy.
Show as, as in the capital reserves for public works.
Does that disappear on January first?
No, no, well, we can, no, not if it's in capital reserves. And even if it weren't in capital reserves, there's a process called encumbrance, which we can use to hold that money over. Like, for, if you just haven't executed the, you know, contract or whatever yet within that year, um, so we can do it, but if it's. I'm trying to, I'm trying to look through the warrant from last year and see, uh. Oh, the capital ones were up front, weren't they?
That's good, no, this helps me.
I should assume, but, I know you were here, and so it's very hard to understa- and believe me, I've been on this board, I can't juggle all this stuff, but it's just. I don't know how that all flows, and then when I didn't see that money that was quasi ear- not quasi, it was earmarked for the stream crossing.
So, it says, yeah, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a hundred and one thousand for stream crossing culvert replacements on Swamp Road and Quaker Meeting House. Municipal share a hundred and one thousand, state share from stream crossing grant two hundred and fifty thousand. So, it, um, and it's under, yeah, because this is under the section capital improvement articles. And it's clearly for a capital project, that hundred and one thousand should be showing as part of the balance in the public works.
For that project. And didn't we go to special town meeting and ask for more?
Yes.
Yeah, it was two projects, that was two years, two or three years ago, yeah.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was, that was, no, that was the Auburn Pownell.
Auburn Pownell.
Yeah. That was before, that was, that was before.
It all blends, but that's why.
No, that's a good call.
There was two hundred and eighty-nine in, in his, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand roughly, in his capital reserve, his capital account. That one hundred and one that got approved last year, never got put into the assigned fund.
That's what I'm saying, so that, but it. Wouldn't know that, right?
See it, so I didn't make it as part of this number.
So, but it should be.
It should be.
Right.
Not in the red as much as you think.
Right, exactly.
But, but that hundred and one is for. But when we go to fund it, that article should be saying, like, when we go to, uh. So, maybe, actually, that, as I say this out loud. When you already have.
You should be asking for forty-nine, right?
Well, I think.
Cause he's got the hundred and one.
Yeah, cause it's a forty-nine thousand dollar increase, and we need to increase, we need to funding the increase, we're not looking to do the whole proj- we already funded the project. We just don't have enough to complete the project.
If we can't use ARPA funds.
You can on this one.
Then we need three hundred thousand as well.
No.
Why?
What?
Why?
Two hundred and fifty thousand was supposed to be from state and federal, or state or.
So, this year, the grant that's in place, or the, not in place, the application that's in place is for one twenty-five. A hundred and twenty-five thousand, so, uh.
That's for one stream crossing or two?
So, it would be, uh, so the, the idea was that they, they went up, so the idea would be that there would be, the idea here was that there would be. One fifty raised, or, or one fifty from ARPA and, and, uh. One fifty for the grant, okay, so we would still have the DEP grant, yeah, and then, so we would still need the one fifty, you're right, yeah.
But, Calvin, you, it's forty-nine, cause you already, you got your one hundred.
Already have a hundred and one.
One already, so.
So, we're, we're, we'll raise it somehow, or.
You can still put it on here as a, as a, uh. As a capital request, you know?
You can't use ARPA against grant funds.
Right.
So, you're getting half grant if you got it, you can't supplement ARPA to another grant.
Right.
That's just part of the condition of the ARPA side.
Which makes sense, cause it's kinda like.
The grades on grades, federal and federal.
You're double different.
But didn't that, didn't that town meeting warrant say we had two hundred and fifty thousand in matching? Or was that what we were looking for and didn't get? That's what we wanted to get.
It said, uh, state share from stream crossing grant was two hundred and fifty thousand, is that, that's still true?
No, that was, we were doing, we had two stream crossings.
Oh, so it was a hundred and twenty-five each?
Yeah, and, and one of them became cost prohibitive, and it's gonna take a lot more engineering, and it won't get done this year, so.
Okay, so we, so we'll.
Just do one.
We're just gonna do one, and.
Hundred twenty-five for the state, and. So, you still had the one twenty-five earmarked from the state.
Calvin, ask a quick question.
That's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah, we had.
The original thing was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two, correct? It's cost prohibitive to do two, the one that we can do, correct me if I'm wrong, is a hundred and fifty?
It's maybe three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand dollars cost to.
For just one now.
Yeah, for just one, that was due to the, the, uh, army corps changes.
Yeah, no, 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 so, that original two fifty really doesn't hold water, because that was for two projects, correct? So, the two projects now in total would be what, seven hundred thousand?
We're only talking one, though.
Yeah, I know. Right, so the, just one project now is two hundred and fifty thousand. Three hundred thousand, okay, so three hundred K, and we already allocated.
Hundred and one.
Hundred, a hundred and one K, so we're, yeah, we're.
What, what's this, what, if, if you got the grant, what would the state amount be, right?
Right, well, a hundred and nine, yes, we are, and he asked for a hundred and fifty, so if he gets that, then he's forty-nine short.
So, three hundred grand is for the whole project, you think, okay, yeah, so it's. Call it fifty. Forty-nine thousand.
But the question, uh, the, yeah, the only thing I would, I'm not pushing back, that's a wrong word, the only thing I just questioned is. We asked for a hundred and, that money for two projects, it's really one project.
Well, that's the other part. This came up, and we, we, uh, actually Mitch did it, I think, it was when Mitch was here, we had him, uh. Reach out, cause I think you raised this question before, somebody did, reached out to Jack, the town attorney, and said, you know, that, you know. Cause the question was, could we, if we're only doing one, can we still spend all the money that was approved on that, and. He came back and told us, yeah, as long as you're, you're still doing essentially the same thing, the s- same type of work that, that is, that we were good.
Yeah, no, um, I do remember that, and you're correct, and, and that is, but it just, it just looks, the optics of it. That's why I would just wanted a quick clarification, because if, if, if you ask for two hundred and fifty thousand, and the town's raising a hundred and twenty-five it or whatever. And all of a sudden now the, the two projects are seven hundred thousand, it's like, how did we get that far off before we even went to the town?
Leave to the state?
Well, it cha- it changed after. Yeah.
So, I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, even myself, who sits here too, uh, too much, but, eh, we just need to re- be really. Clarify this when we go to the town, Calvin, that's probably gonna be your job to, you know, really explain to them what exactly happened. Because there's gonna be some questions on that.
The permitting process changed dramatically, which, which priced the project right out of the water.
Yeah, no, I get that, but the permitting is permitting, that doesn't. I just think, you know, you gotta need, like, like Rich, uh, just did, you know, you gotta kinda walk people through the progression, like. This is where we started, this is what happened, this is where we are now, this is why, you know, we need, um, you know, another, you know, fifty thousand dollars. To, um, to complete the work on this one culvert, the second one is a much, turns out that's a much larger project. That needs more engineering and whatever, and there's no ask on the table for that one at this point, so.
Yeah, that's just, I think that's the real big thing, like, this has nothing to do with the, and, and what, eh, the question that's gonna come up of it. It's gonna be like, well, how far out are we on that one that's gonna run us probably, by the time we do it, a million dollars.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't even something that we are required to do, right? It's like, we can, there's the opportunity, you know, to get it done because there's matching grant funds to do it. But it's not something that we're being mandated to do, right? Like, we, we could just.
Right, we would.
We could just, well, we already applied for the grant, but that, it's all voluntary, right, we, we didn't need to do that.
Correct.
There wasn't a safety issue involved. Well, that, that, there was the reasoning behind it.
Cause it's, if it's three hundred thousand dollars and a hundred and fifty thousand will come from the state.
It's a non-matching grant, actually, but it's just that the cost happens to be.
See what I mean, the cost is more than the match. Yeah, you're right, okay, yeah, so it's not technically a matching grant, but it's a, on a three hundred and do- thousand dollar project, at least that's what we think at this point.
They'll match fifty percent.
Well, no, I think you said it's, it's a, it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
For a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you do what you want, you, if you.
And if it ends up costing four hundred thousand dollars, we're on the hook for two fifty.
Right. We're gonna give you the one fifty, and that's what you're getting, and if you can do it for one forty.
Are you confident in that three hundred thousand dollar number?
Uh, the engineer and I went over the numbers, and based on what we got for last, uh, last time it went out to bid, and then the, the subsequent changes. Three hundred thousand's a comfortable number, that's what we're, what, what we believe, cause you'll know for sure once it goes out to bid, which, you know, about first of the year, so.
And, just to play devil's advocate, if it went out to bid, and it came back much higher, we could decide, we're not gonna do that and return the grant funds. Okay.
And then just have an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general?
No, we would stay in capital.
Capital, public works.
Yeah, that's, you know, you raised a point, I mean, we might need, we might need a town vote to return the grant funds. Um, if we, since we collected a hundred thousand for that, for that purpose.
By the time we get to town meeting, we'll know that.
Maybe.
Right, if he puts it out in January.
Maybe.
Right, we should be okay.
Maybe, I don't, I, you would think that on the last one, right? Act on what we have for information at the time.
Well, that was outside of the bid process that changed it, but. The bid specs that you went out last time have been consistent, nothing's changed, so. I guess from my perspective, I don't wanna ask the town twice for a project, and then come to the, the third time and say, hey, we still didn't get it done.
Yeah.
So, I wanna make sure, if we ask the town for this additional forty-nine thousand, that there's at least one crossing going in, and that's gonna be, that's gonna get it done.
Yeah, so I think, I think the, um, yeah, I agree, um.
I don't wanna come back here next year and say, hey, or have a special meeting, we're gonna need another seventy-five thousand dollars.
We should, we should know, right?
Design is done, so it can go to bid, uh, January, we can turn it up first.
We should know by the town meeting what it's gonna cost.
Okay. We could, if we needed to, we, eh, we could amend the amount before it actually goes on the warrant.
Is there any reason why we can't send it out to bid now? To get ahead of it?
Yeah, contractors don't, they're still focused on this year.
And if you're not authorized to spend the money until next April.
Well, what we typically do is we say subject to approval.
They wouldn't hold, the bid wouldn't hold that.
They would know that.
Yeah, but the bid wouldn't hold that.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with the pro- like I said, I don't want, I just, as long as we get done on this whack, I'm good with that, I understand. The last complexities of the last three, four years in terms of the change, the rapid change in our.
Let's say it's for fifty thousand, but by the time we actually approached town meeting and are finalizing the warrant, we might, we might have more definitive information. It might be less, or we might say, you know what, we have to amend this amount to, you know, seventy-five thousand, because it's gonna be more, um, than we thought. Or we decide, you know what, we're not gonna do it at all.
Yeah, put that to bed, just, and this is my last thing, we haven't accepted any grant money as of yet, we didn't do that.
Correct.
Is that correct, we haven't gotten one dime from this grant, okay.
Okay, thanks. Alright. No, no, that's good, that's exactly the type of stuff we should be talking through.
Yeah, helped me tremendously.
Yep. Okay, anything else? On CIP, alright, I think we're good, go to the next step and send it downstream to the committee.
Alright, I'll do the updates before we do.
Yep, send it to them, okay, uh, next on the agenda is the town managers' reports.
Okay, first up, uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, by the way, um, first up, as I told you last time, I'd give you an update on the funding on. Our ARPA project that went to special town meeting, okay, so. The total for the, um, special town meeting for Article three, four, five, and six was a total of a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Okay, so today, we have spent fifty-one thousand, oh seventeen, and fifty-six cents. Okay, so there's a remaining balance of that hundred and eighteen of sixty-seven, seven, twelve, and forty-four cents. Of the, of the money allocated at special meeting, that's what's left, so, what's, what that's gonna buy is the computers. The computers are now at BEK getting set up, we should have those within a week or so.
How many did you end up getting this time around?
We, we got eight.
Eight, okay, good.
So, the, the total funds, you know, I pulled out a trio, so the total funds was like four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two thirteen, eighty-seven. So, what's been spent today?
Sorry, say that number again?
Four twenty-two, two thirteen, and eighty-seven cents.
They literally, like, went down to the penny, eighty-seven cents?
So, yeah, um, so.
We gotta, we, we do, we have to allocate something that ends in eighty-seven cents.
So, so today, with, with the work being done in this building, fire, um. The, uh, the GIS stuff, we haven't, that's still outstanding, we have three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, thirty-one.
Well, that includes the allocated money that hasn't been spent, so that is kind of untouchable at this point, right?
You're not gonna touch that.
So, we really want the, the sixty, sixty-seven, twelve minus from the four twenty-two is really what are.
The one eighteen, seven thirty, my, fr- taken from the four twenty-two, two thirteen.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, any more questions for the fire chief, he has to respond.
I think, uh, I think we're good.
In his private vehicle, okay.
Alright.
Wanna take mine?
Well played, sir. He is one sharp dude, I tell you.
So the te- the, so the town office and fire station, HVAC and insulation, that all came to, uh. Forty-six thousand, two eighty-four sixteen.
So where did we wind up with the insulation up there? Did we end up eighteen inches deep?
Yeah, I was pretty close, we're about this far away from the, from the, uh, heater, the furnace.
Well there. Thank you.
Good job, Todd. Oh, you know, he's gonna show up in a t-shirt in the middle of winter, you know. Go ahead, sorry, we're getting, we're getting a little punchy, been a couple hours.
So I guess, you know, I guess the, as far as the special town meeting and what they've approved, um. Of the hundred and eighteen, we've spent fifty-one seventeen dollars.
Are you thinking that, when all is said and done, and actually, it's kinda article by article, right, so. If you, like, for instance, uh, what, there were four different articles, right, so if the. Do you anticipate any unspent funds for any of the four articles going back into the ARPA pool?
Yep.
Okay, alright, so, we don't need to know what those numbers are right now, but. Then, we'll, it'll be good to know that when we come around to, actually, the budget and the capital items and how we're gonna fund those, we'll wanna know how much. How much we have to play with, so.
Five decimal places.
Yeah.
Probably send us a bill.
Another thing that I'll share, so I checked with the, uh, with MMA on ice rink and unimproved land. So, any town property that is unimproved, we are protected under the tort claims liability.
Okay.
Unless we're really negligent and doing something really dumb, so if we have an ice rink, which you can have. And we're plowing it and we hit a kid, but they're not gonna protect you that.
Right.
But you are protected, it's right here, um.
So if we have an ice rink and some kid falls and breaks his arm.
Yeah, we're all, we're all.
We're all set, okay.
The law, you can read it here, the, the law's there, but it all has to do with unimproved land.
An ice rink would be improved.
Yeah, isn't that an improvement?
No, because you're just really flooding an area that's.
Oh, okay, so we're not talking about putting up like a.
Right.
What's it called?
Oh, plus there's also a, um, uh, land, buildings, structures, facilities, or equipment designed for use primarily by the public. In connection with public outdoor recreation.
We're good. We, we're covered under.
Okay, last we did know.
Unless we're really negligent, that's like.
Okay, like anything, common sense applies.
It's good to know that that actually applies, in this case, it's not always the case.
Doesn't mean you won't go to court, it just means they might not, they probably won't.
Right, okay, great.
Okay, so, I tweeted in my packet here, um, MMA, the workers' comp. So, had a discussion with them, and it turns out that our workers' comp is really through the roof. Um, we're paying, if you take an average town. We are paying a hundred and thirteen percent higher than your average town.
Yeah, jeez.
It's a lot, we're paying about, we're paying roughly about ninety-six, ninety-eight thousand a year. We should be paying around fifty-five, so what got us there? So, we've had some claims, which I can't really talk about, but claims will do it, um. And we don't really necessarily have a return to work policy, so the longer you're gonna claim and you remain on workman's comp. The higher that rate goes up, so. Fire does have a return to work policy, um, I've got one from MMA, we're gonna get together and kinda adopt one. Of course, we'll share it with you guys, you, you folks will be the ones to, to adopt it, but that's one thing that you need, so. MMA has an incentive program, which is what I included in your packet, so part of the. Part of getting that rate down is to let MMA, who's our insurer, say that safety is a priority for us. Right now, they have no- nothing from the town that's saying, yeah, we believe in safety, and we're gonna do everything we can to. Work safer and, and, and sort of bring that down, um, what are some of those things that we do? We get a safety committee, it could be like, and, and it's right in your packet here, what, what that, what that means. There's three different tiers that we can meet, I think we're, we're already doing this stuff, MMA just doesn't know it. So chief is already doing safety committee meetings, it's just that Cowan hasn't been part of it, and leadership has to be a part of it, so I have to be part of those meetings. You have to have, take minutes, and you just have to prove that you're, you're doing, you're, you're talking about this stuff, you're filling out the. First incident report, which is what they do, but MMA doesn't know it. So we just gotta let MMA know, and if we check off each one of these tiers, the first one saves you five percent. The second one, if you meet all those, saves you seven and a half percent, the last one, if we meet those, you save ten percent on your, on your, on your rate. That stuff adds up, but the return to work policy, that's another little feather in our cap to, cause we don't have one officially. Um, and that's what's driving up the, uh, mod rate, we can do better than that, and if people get hurt. And some of them, you know, they, if they get hurt really bad and they can't work, then they can't work, but if, if they can. We need to try to get them back to work, even if it's, even if they're just doing training, or they're.
Light duty.
Light duty, cause. The longer they're on, the, the longer they're out on comp, the more it's gonna drive up our rate, we're paying a pretty, pretty hefty rate.
Sure, do we have one rate for everyone in the town, or are there classifications?
Yeah, so like, fire is like ten point four A, um, office workers were point three A. Yeah, and then, uh, public works is, they're a little less than fire, fire is the bigger, bigger rate. It wa- what happened, what, what, why this became about is. We got a, uh, I got a bill from MMA for sixteen thousand dollars for an audit, and I'm like, what is this? And I was asking people in here, cause I didn't know, they were like, I don't know, so we ended up paying it, you know, we worked with MMA, right, so. Doing a little investigation, well, what happened every year, they want you to estimate what the wages are gonna be. So they can adjust your workman's comp, last year, from January to April, they tried to get in touch with someone here, and there was no response. So what they did was they adjusted it twenty percent. So, I'm like, when they, when he came and met with me, I'm like, man, I, I'd love to get a twenty percent raise, but that ain't gonna happen. So, but that's what jacked it all up and made it sixteen thousand dollars more than what we paid, so. Workman's comp, you pay what you pay, you, you estimate, if you're over, they'll send you a check. If you're under, we owe them at the end of the year, so that's why we was over so much, because they did their audit. Jacked it up twenty percent, and they do that because the workers' comp board tells MMA that's what you do.
I get, I get it, but, like you just said, once the audit is done, and what you expend for payroll, that. You should, if, if it wasn't truly that number, you should be getting a refund.
We'll be getting, now that they have the numbers, we'll be getting more than sixteen thousand dollars back. They just gotta have.
I didn't know, cause, you know, maybe, I don't even know, you correct me on the year here. You know, a couple of years ago, we had maybe, uh, we had an individual that maybe took advantage, not take advantage, bad word, sorry, um. We had an individual, like, a department head that gave people raises and things like that, and, and as a town, we added like per diem staff, or at the fire department, and I didn't know if that number. Boosted up the, um, total town payroll so much that that's where that, that increase was, that we didn't really necessarily account for it.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, it would, not that magnitude.
No, 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 not that magnitude at all.
Huge, I mean, I've been here for a couple of years now, we, we've had a few claims, um.
And they, and they.
That's a, that's a lot.
They stay, well, they stay on the, they stay on the books for three years.
Right.
So hopefully they fall off, that'll help bring it down too, but just getting into this safety incentive program and telling MMA that.
Yeah.
We, we, cause we're doing this, I mean.
It's not a heavy lift.
Just saying, yeah, we're, we're.
Calvin, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it two years ago, I, I think, you know, with a little bit of Rob's tutelage, you guys went through all of this? And redid everything and revamped the whole work comp over there?
This is workers' comp, I mean, this is main municipal session, what we do is through main department of labor, is, there's a whole.
You're talking about that safety, okay. I'm confusing the two.
But it would probably feed right into that.
What he described is what we went over a few years ago.
Yeah, you're just taking credit for it now. Didn't send it to the government on a form, it didn't happen. Exactly.
Third one, um, third one rate, uh, well, second one, all departments meet, main department of labor's compliance directors.
Check.
So he's, they're in.
You say, they're doing the stuff.
So we can already save five percent, just.
Just by checking the box.
You sign this.
Yeah.
I send this in, I check the box, and send it into them, and they'll automatically.
I think you can sign that.
Well, it says, uh, attest by governing board, so.
Yeah, that, this one I think.
This one you, you really do have to sign, so anyway, I just wanted you to, to just be aware of that, cause what we have to do. Uh, is really get that mod rate down, but that's, that's too high.
That is.
It really is, I mean, a hundred and thirteen percent over your average town.
Yeah, that average of all towns, or average of towns our size?
Well, most towns in this, the average of towns, like, they, they have like, and they call it a factor of one, when it's average.
Yeah, yeah.
We're two point one three. So.
It, it might be. Is there any choice, is there any other choice for workers' comp? There's the only one choice for the state.
Oh, you mean as far as an insurance?
You could, well, but you're, but MMA's rates are really good, uh.
Okay.
They're pretty phenomenal.
Explored.
They're nonprofit, so, they're not gonna be making any kinda, Marcus Baloo came in and, and it, it went over with me. And MMA, getting insurance to MMA is a good. Is a, is a good place to be, I mean, most towns.
I know, I don't, but, but you're basically saying, I mean, we're paying double.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, that's, let's, let's just call it fifty thousand dollars a year extra pay.
Exactly.
I, I don't remember anybody, you know, passing away or anything on the job, fifty thousand dollar premium per year seems. Like a heavy tax for a couple of, I don't know, it's. That's a lot.
But in this particular case, you have to figure that twenty percent rate money on the wages added along.
Is a big part of that.
That's a big part of that, cause they didn't get no response, so they're like, well, this is what we're doing, we're gonna make sure we're covered.
I got you.
So they'll, they'll, they'll reduce, and I'll, I, I can keep it posted as that, that goes, but.
Yeah, and they all do that, by the way, if you don't respond to them, they add an additional twenty, thirty percent on top.
Good incentive to respond next time.
I, I use a workman's, and I don't know if you could ask them if, and it might be hard for the town to do this, but how I do my workman's comp is. I pay every week by payroll, so whatever my payroll is, is what my workman's comp bill is, so I don't get hit with big surpluses or. Hey, by the way, you owe us another fifteen grand at the end of the year, so we pay it based off payroll on a weekly basis.
We pay quarterly for the town.
But is it quarterly for the insurance for the year, or is it quarterly based off your quarterly taxes, that's what.
For the year.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if even if you pay it quarterly, rather than on a projected number, a hard number, every quarter you would make that. You would actually, so you're, you're almost audited quarterly, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you're paying based off the amount of payroll that you expend, not an estimated amount of payroll.
They're asking for that information.
Yeah, they're asking for an estimated amount of what your hypothesis is for the year, of how much you're gonna spend on payroll.
Right, but then, but then at the end of the year, to make it right that either we pay them or they pay us.
Right.
They get the information from, from us, and all the codes for the employees.
Like the federal income tax.
The ten ninety-nines for people that work there.
The withholding or whatever, and. Right, what I'm getting at is, you can, you can set it up either on a quarterly or a weekly basis, so you'll never have any surprises, plus or minus.
But through MMA, you think?
Uh, that I don't know, not every company offers that, but.
And once we get it.
And it might be tough for you with your payroll department, I don't know, might not be feasible.
Once, once he gets, gets it kinda fixed, you know, unless we have incidents. Things are pretty stable, this, we shouldn't really see.
It should drop on the rock.
As long as you answer.
Hopefully, in two thousand twenty-four, we'll see a pretty significant difference.
Nobody answered that call during COVID, so they got a whole bunch of surplus money over there.
So I'm just gonna ask you guys to sign this, this party that can send this, so I can get this going and get us on the books and.
That's something to tell them, Calvin, if, if you haven't had one in three years, and so you don't have any more incidents.
That's, I can't remember the, other than like, three years ago, I remember, somebody slipped out of a truck, that was a lie.
So, I got one more thing that I just wanna.
Alright.
There was a big one a few years, about five years ago, the guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
So.
Okay, moving on, guys.
So just the last thing that I really just wanna report, just make you aware of, is, is the front office workloads this, this month has been unbelievable. Because of the vote, I mean, I think over half of the registered voters in Durham voted, uh, before today.
That's crazy.
So that put a lot of strain on, um, well, Jessica, the whole, all of them, actually. As a matter of fact, she couldn't get her petitions done, um, so, that was, so she was in contact with the secretary of state.
What does that mean, didn't get the petitions done, certify signatures?
Yes, she just didn't have time, she just didn't have time to do them, and, um, it was unfortunate, cause one of the petitioners. Got angry with her and told her to do her job, I, I, I didn't happen to be here, probably a good thing, cause I probably reacted real well to that. Cause I know how str- you know, they've been, they've been straight out.
Yeah.
So, in light of that, I think when we move forward to the next election, like, especially the presidential election, I think. To help with that, if we could maybe set this room up as the voting room, and maybe hopefully get some nice volunteers in town. To kinda man the, the voting, so with, that we're not taxing the, the window. Cause you're still, you know, registering vehicles and getting permits and marriage license and this and that, and they. They did it outstanding.
Do we need to like deputize, deputize somebody to, to authorize absentee ballots?
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk, and we can do that, cause I, you know, I live in Brunswick, and that's what, of course, I couldn't go vote there today, so I did absentee ballot. When you go into their council room, they got big, long tables, and they got five or six ladies behind those tables, and I know they're volunteers, they're not city employees. We may need to look at, next year, we can kinda do it as a, as a, what I would consider, it's not really a dry run, but it's gonna be a referendum here. So there might not be that big a turnout, but presidential turnout will be huge.
Oh, it's gonna be.
So.
This one.
They, I just wanna just give a big shout out to.
I think she said twenty-two fifty when I saw her.
That's what she said to me, yeah, it was up at, up in the twenty-two.
More than, more than half.
That is more than half.
Yeah, cause two years ago, they had twenty-three, she was twenty-four, five, fifty, or twenty-five.
Plus, plus live dialing today.
Right.
That's unprecedented for town Durham for sure.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right.
Yeah, so just a, just a shout out to the staff, they did good.
Yeah, they really.
But that's a big load, that absentee dialing is a big load.
Huge, it's so inefficient, you know, and I get that people wanna do it, but I don't, I don't know if they fully get how. Much of a burden it puts on staff.
And how do you tell the residents just how big a load that does? Yeah, how can you quantify the time that just spent on?
One thing, you know, I think we'll look into this more over the last couple of years, um, but like, we were talking a little bit today, like, I think in some places. You know, there's a difference between early voting and absentee vote, right, and I think there, there can be maybe sep- slightly different. Processes for that, so you don't have to process every early voter as an in-person absentee, maybe, I don't know, I think. Maybe there's things we can look at there to just make it a little bit more efficient, but I don't know what's, what law even allows, but we'll have to look into that. Alright, is that it?
That's it.
Alright.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Josh moves, is there a second, Joe, all in favor? Okay, upcoming meeting, select board, uh, eleven twenty-two and twelve thirteen at six thirty PM here at town hall. I don't believe we need an executive session tonight.
Nope, I think we're good.
Good, alright, so guys, don't leave before we assign the actual warrant, we need to do that, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Rich moves adjournment, Joe seconds, all in favor? Alright, we are adjourned.